I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 municipal council meeting to order. Can I have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, the republic of America.
Madam Secretary, can I have roll call, please?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Hakeem Jones?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Dustin Queenen?
Here.
Heather Lewis? Thomas LaPera?
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, eyes have it, votes are passes. Uh, executive session announcement, we did have an executive session on personnel.
And legging.
And legging. Uh, council, any announcements?
I have a question about announcement. Are we doing the Santa Claus on a fire truck this week, this weekend?
Chief, Santa Claus on a fire truck, uh, are you gonna be taking Santa around?
Yeah, I don't have the dates with me, they will be in December, we'll make sure Kevin gets theirs.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Um, our winter fair is this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, I think, I believe it's one to six?
For Sunday?
Three to eight on Saturday.
Three to eight Saturday, one to six Sunday, the platters are over there.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, any public comments?
Yes, Jim Waters?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Happy holidays. James Waters, Hamilton Street. Um, wow, I didn't realize there was gonna be this big a crowd.
We knew you were speaking. So your audience.
Some kinds of plan comes together, you know? Well, anyhow, I've been falling behind because Times Herald doesn't deliver the newspaper to me anymore. Haven't figured out why. But I'm behind times on the ARPA funds and the Norristown five-year plan, public input. So I've really summarized this, cause I got another meeting to go to. Number one, stop stormwater flooding of all roads leading to a hospital. Two, stop stormwater flooding damage to Elmwood Park. Three, stop stormwater flood damage to Elmwood Zoo. Four, stop stormwater flooding of James and Hamilton Street. Five, stop stormwater flood damage to the Norristown sewer plant. Six, remove stormwater pollution from the Schuylkill River at Stony Creek for hydroelectric on the Norristown dam, go green. Seven, put sprinklers in most dangerous apartment buildings. Eight, pave all alleys and stop cars from parking in muddy backyards. Nine, more USGS flood gauges for early warning, Sawmill Run. Ten, make fish ladders work, shad run is worth thirty million dollars a year in commerce. Um, that's got a whole story on its own. Eleven, now this is from the, this is the only thing I really, only have information on from the Play Town, and this was from the Third Act wishlist. And that's the playground at Finance and Powell Streets where there's a parking lot. Um, another excerpt that I have here is from President Lincoln said, "You cannot escape responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today." All of these ten issues were touched on in the, uh, book Two, The Fix. So some of these studies go all the way back to sixty-three, especially with the issue with Sawmill Run. The statement in there, and I'll stop right there, is that Sawmill Run was the design of flood control that needs to be installed on the Stony Creek, and that was from nineteen sixty-three. So I think if we go back, we might be able to go forward. Thank you, everyone, have a good holiday.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thomas Flores?
Hi, I'm gonna do in Spanish, and she's gonna be my translator. My name is Thomas Flores, and we're in the 335 of West Mafia Street.
My name is Thomas Flores, and I'm from Norristown, in the 335 West Mafia Street.
So I'm part of the Coalition of Negocios Latinos in Norristown, and we want to see if you could work together with us to make Norristown a city with more opportunities to grow more businesses in the future.
Um, I'm part of the new Coalition for Business, Latinos Business in Norristown, and we come here today to see if we can, you're a municipality, and we as a coalition can work together and see, um, Norristown as a better place or improve in business, Latinos businesses here. What else? Nothing?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, move right into fire, resolution twenty-two dash seventy-eight. Resolution approving the hiring of two full-time municipal firefighters. So Chief, this is the, hire two new firefighters, correct?
It is, thank you, Mr. President. Before you receive it for your consideration is resolution twenty-two seventy-eight for the hiring of two municipal firefighters to replace retiring fire department personnel.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash seventy-eight?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Eyes have it, passes. Aye, William Ernie?
Aye, William Ernie.
Duesomally swear?
Duesomally swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Norristown.
Laws of Municipality of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office?
I'll discharge the duties of my office?
As firefighter for Municipality of Norristown?
As firefighter for Municipality of Norristown?
Fire department with honor and fidelity?
Fire department with honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce the laws?
I'll uphold, obey, and enforce the laws?
Of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Norristown?
Of Pennsylvania and Municipality of Norristown?
Without consideration to a person's race?
Without consideration to a person's race?
Color?
Color?
Sex?
Sex?
Religious creed?
Religious creed?
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation?
Age?
Age?
National origin?
National origin?
Ancestry?
Ancestry?
Handicap?
Handicapped?
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Aye, Keith Whitley?
Aye, Keith Whitley.
Duesomally swear?
Duesomally swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the Municipality of Norristown?
And the Municipality of Norristown?
I will discharge the duties of my office?
I will discharge the duties of my, my office?
As firefighter for the Municipality of Norristown?
As firefighter for the Municipality of Norristown?
Fire department with honor and fidelity?
Fire department with honor and fidelity?
I will uphold, obey, and enforce the laws?
I will uphold and obey and enforce the laws?
Of Pennsylvania?
Of Pennsylvania?
And the Municipality of Norristown?
And the Municipality of Norristown?
Without consideration to a person's race?
Without consideration to a person's race?
Color?
Color?
Sex?
Sex?
Religious creed?
Religious creed?
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation?
Age?
Age?
National origin?
National origin?
Ancestry?
Ancestry?
Handicap?
Handicap?
Or disability? Congratulations.
It's a crowd.
Unless everybody wants to hang out, I think it's time to take pictures. Alright, moving on to building and codes enforcement. Mr. Singh, the Historical Architectural Review Board of November.
Thank you, Council President. Counsel before you is a request to approve or deny the Historical Architectural Review Board applications which were received, reviewed, and recommended for approval by HARP for November twenty-two. As you all know, the Norristown HARP receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs and renovations for properties located in Norristown's historic districts. Uh, those applications are reviewed by the HARP members to confirm that the repair and or renovation work is in compliance with our municipal ordinance. Uh, the Historical Architectural Review Board has reviewed, uh, the application and have approved either as submitted or modified. As mentioned on the certificate of appropriateness, the following property, thirteen thirty-one DeKalb Street, and the recommendation, uh, before you, counsel, is to, uh, approve this COA. Thank you, counsel.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the HARP Board of November twenty-two?
So moved.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Ti- Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Eyes have it?
Thank you.
Cards, passes. Thank you. Uh, police, resolution twenty-two dash seventy-nine, motion to approve request for disabled parking spaces.
Counsel President, thank you. Uh, counsel before you is a, uh, request for resolution twenty-two seventy-nine, uh, for three addresses in Norristown for handicap parking. Six forty-nine Cone Street, ten twenty-seven Cherry Street, and eleven oh six Green Street. Uh, all three addresses were vetted by our parking enforcement and all fit the criteria before you, for your approval.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve less, resolution twenty-two dash seventy-nine?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the eyes have it, resolution passes. Uh, on to resolution twenty-two dash eighty, motion to approve the civil service entry-level police officer list.
Thank you, Council President, again, council members, this is before you for your consideration. To approve the Civil Service Commission's, um, certified list for new entries, new hires for entry-level police officers, with a compote list of seventeen names. Uh, we also like the permission, uh, for the Chief of Police to begin vetting these names and, uh, getting the approval to start the hiring process for new officers. As we are currently four below our contractual minimum or maximum, and expect to have two more officers leave the ranks in December, in January. Will put us six below, uh, so we're really hurting for personnel at this point.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash eighty?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the eyes have it, resolution passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to finance, ordinance twenty-two dash oh-six, appointment of Portnoy as solicitor.
Good evening, um, for your consideration is ordinance twenty-two oh-six. Uh, we're gonna, we've been using Portnoy since two thousand nine, and this, they are requesting an increase in rates, which is the first time they've done it in five years. We had the same rates, and, uh, I included the rates within the ordinance, and it was also advertised on November twenty-first.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash oh-six?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the eyes have it, resolution passes. Resolution twenty-two dash seventy-five, uh, the capital improvement plan.
Okay, this resolution was initially presented to council for discussion on November first. Um, we haven't had any changes to, we've had minor changes just for timing in between years, but nothing has really changed significantly since then, the grant total is still the same. So we're asking for your approval for the next five-year plan, spot your plan.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash seventy-five?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, eyes have it, resolution passes. Moving on to resolution twenty-two dash seventy-four, the twenty-two-three consolidated fee schedule.
Uh, the, this consolidated fee schedule was also presented to council in November. Um, and we've, uh, again, we've made no changes since, um, we've discussed it, and we're asking for your ado- how is that? Yeah, is that right? Yeah, we're asking for adoption.
Counsel, any questions?
I'm sorry, mixing up my dates.
Um, I do, on the parking section of, the parking, um, tickets, um, section of the consolidated fee. Just a couple, um, observations. Um, I don't totally agree with, um, increasing the ticket rates, because I feel living in a residential area, especially living where I live, I live near the library, I don't see a lot of the parking tickets enforced. Um, I see a lot of truck parking. I think if we, um, stayed on top of collecting and ticketing, those are not, I see a lot of alley parking for trucks, um, parking in backyards. Um, personally, I live there, and I sometimes have to park two, three blocks away at night as a female, because there's no parking. Um, working trucks park, there's cars parking for two, three days that don't move. Um, and I think for me, but doing a better job of ticketing and, um, staying on top of these offenders. Also, I feel as though that we should revisit, we're living in a different time now, revisiting, um, parking stickers on cars, um, like two per household or something like that, because I feel as though if I had a parking sticker, I know I'm guaranteed to park where I need to park, that I'm not gonna park, have to park two and three blocks away from where I live at. And I, I know if we did a survey or something, I know now, people probably would agree to it, because there is really no parking in Norristown, if you look at it. Um, I get upset every time I come home late at night and I have to park. Um, actually, I'm fighting tickets now that from parking, because I refuse to park two, three blocks away. But I'm parked on my block, but it's just that I'm parked maybe on a yellow strip or whatever. But I think that we really should visit the parking stickers on cars. And that too would identify who lives in that area, because I think it's like really getting ridiculous. Um, if you drive on Elmen Willow Street, right there by the library, just that one block, you'll see probably ten working trucks parked there every single day. And personally, I don't feel like I should have to call the cops every time, or in the alleys every time. So I just really feel like we should revisit it, just being consistent, staying on top of ticketing, and who should be parked there and who should not be parked there. And I really feel like for me as a resident, I really would have a parking sticker on my car that would distinguish where I live at.
Mr. Jones, is that something that we could look into, what blocks are happening the most as parking issues, and see about what that would look like?
Yeah, I, I definitely, we, we can have a conversation about it and do some research and, and come back to council. I think I was, the parking pass thing happened right before, I think it ended by the time I got here. But I do remember, uh, the one big issue was that, I think we charged for the, just the cost of producing, and, uh, that turned into a big fiasco, and, and I think we spent years having to reimburse people, and ultimately ended up having to write off it, because we couldn't find people to reimburse, uh, for the cost of that. But certainly, let's have that discussion, uh, be happy to do it and present some information for council and give us some direction. I think on your other issue, I mean, you guys tell us what you want as a body, uh, if you want the, uh, if you want the, um, towing fees to remain the same, or if, if you, you know, that's, that's your call.
I, I believe that the towing fees should definitely go up. I think we're the lowest in the area, or everywhere else around us, and, I, I mean, we haven't raised them since, I forget what Chief said.
Yeah, we're consistently low, we, I mean, we're not, we're never, we're never the lead in terms of, uh, in terms of fees. We try to stay, try to get to the norm for whatever, uh, is the area, but if, if you guys, uh...
So the parking tickets would be getting us up to about the normal?
Yeah, I think it, it, from what I can recall in discussion, I think, like, if, if you, but I think it does. I mean, we've, we've, uh, we don't spend a whole lot of time trying to bring it, you know, we don't bring it every year or try to raise it every year, but we try to marry those to the cost, uh, that we have, and we also recognize that in terms of getting towing companies to bid on our towing contracts, we have to have them, uh, have a fee that they feel like that they can live with. And so we try to keep it as, as, as close to what the median is, as, you know, always.
I'm sure with gas prices and everything going up, you know, seeing what's happening.
Yeah, our portion of it is, is, is very small in terms of what municipality itself gets, but to, to attract towing companies to do the work, they wanna meet their costs as closely as possible.
So I think the issue being, it's, uh, not the ticket prices, but the actual try to stop parking issue, so?
Yeah, I think being consistent, I think I, we see more and more of it happening. And I, if you probably do questionnaire for neighbors, you do see like probably more and more cars per household and more and more trucks, working trucks, parking. They come home and with their trucks and park and taking up parking spaces, and you cannot really determine who lives where, or if a car is parked there for two or three days, that's taking up a parking spot. And I know the crime, I really don't wanna, and I know other people don't wanna walk two, three blocks to get to their house if they gotta work at night and things of that sort. But I see an increase, even driving in Norristown, it's a lot of parking issues, you cannot park. That's my choice.
So that, I think, just visiting the parking permit and not necessarily producing the, the ticket fund would be good, right?
Yeah, and, and the truck parking, I think we need to get in the context.
I think along that line, there are still zones that still do have permits. Um, and so potentially worth a comparison to like whether that actually solves parking issues. And in the area where Montgomery Hospital used to be, still has permits, um, meant to help like people who still come in and work in and out of the human services building, um, so that the residential parking around there is like preserved for the residents, versus just like the workers who come every day and don't wanna pay for the parking garage. Um, so maybe there could be some comparison to whether that's actually solving the issues that they're per, supposed to solve, because if it's, you know, houses have more and more cars and fill up the street, then
That's not gonna solve it.
There's still gonna be the same number of cars on the street.
What we can do?
Yeah, we'll, we'll def- we'll definitely have a little work sense from you.
Yeah, I'll touch on, yeah, I, I see the same issues with the, the trucks, cause a lot of times it's a company. Yeah, company's not registered in Norristown, and it obviously is not living here, but it does take up space from, from multiple residents, and it's throughout town. You know, nothing to take away from someone's ability to make money, but you have to find a place to park their vehicles if they're taken away from residents. My question is, um, the, the amount of time between getting a ticket and having to pay it, are we, are we at a five-day period, or are we at a ten-day period? Does anybody know?
It's five days.
Five business days. Make it tense.
Okay. Alright, so my, my concern on the five business day, I'm hearing a lot of concerns if, you know, you get a ticket and you're not from here, you're from out of town, you're, you're visiting, or even if it falls, you know, like five business days is, in my opinion, it's minimal. I think, I think you should look into maybe increasing it at some point. And you have some folks who can't even pay the ticket till they get paid, so before they can even pay the ticket, their, their, their fine is up, and, um, curious, you know, if district court is being crowded because of the five-day period or not.
Can we, I, sorry, I was gonna say, I, I feel like years ago, we upped it to
Eight?
To, because of the paid, the paid period conversations, Bailey's ringing a bell in my head.
Tickets are thirty dollars now.
Ten?
It's, so, yeah, tickets twenty, twenty-eight. Those are mainly tickets, and then after the five business days, they go up to ten dollars, and then they have approximately two to three weeks to pay it before it goes to court. Those are the ones that are, um, issued by the ticket, say. The ones that are issued by police, they're different, because we have to manually enter those into the system, so a person may have longer to pay. But the, the ones that, um, are issued by the ticket writers, they're available to pay immediately online, so...
No parking on Tuesday because of certain things, and no, no parking on this side from eight to noon.
Right.
I just think five days is not enough time for it.
You said more like three weeks, right?
They had three weeks to pay, well, after the five days, it was up to ten dollars, and then they had about three weeks to pay before it goes to district court. The problem with district court, we had, it wasn't the line where we just moved over to the new ticket system, so they just started going back to court. So there was maybe like a month period where they weren't going to court. So now they're just starting going back to district court.
I think we should look at
Look into the time period.
Making sure that timeline gives people at least a pay period before.
So you wanna switch it to ten days?
Ten's more realistic, in my opinion, than five.
I think ten days too.
Alright, can we, we'll visit that as well?
Ten business days to pay before it escalates?
Yes.
Okay.
And, I mean, and if, if, if you guys feel like that, we can, you can say that as a part of what you wanna do tonight with that, uh, portion of it, and we can write it into, you know, into this new, new fee schedule.
Okay.
And, and, uh, and do that, and, and at least take care of that part immediately.
For ten days?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, any other questions or comments? So who, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash seventy-four with the change that the ticket goes from five days to ten days to pay with the, the increase?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the eyes have it, resolution passes. Ordinance twenty-two dash oh-five, adopting the fiscal year twenty-two-three budget and establishing the real estate tax rate for twenty-two-three.
Just gonna do a brief, brief overview of what we've done with the budget before, on the budget before.
As we discussed before, um, first we'll go over the twenty-two, twenty-two budget status. And, um, as everybody has experienced, uh, our operating culture up due to inflation, mostly gas and vehicle maintenance, public safety overtime, self-debt and shortages, and a decline in available volunteer fire players. On the good note, our Act five eleven taxes are doing better than expected and will help offset some of these expenses. And, but as budgeted, we still expect to need a good part of the one point two million of ARPA money expected to close to the twenty-twenty-two gap. For twenty-twenty-three, our first, when we went through the budget, we had a one point eight million dollar revenue gap. The revenues continue to be pretty much flat, but our costs continue to increase, just salaries, just cost inflation. Um, right now, we have wage increases for police and fires set at three percent, but we're currently in negotiations. A four percent increase would add another hundred and four thousand and five percent would add another two hundred and seven thousand. Uh, high inflation, again, we don't know where that's going. Thankfully, we've had good news recently, but that impacts both labor and operating costs. Recession in twenty-twenty-three will negatively impact revenue if that occurs. And the tumbling stock market, again, will increase our pension costs. And recreation area, the planned expansion, that will increase our operating costs. This is where we, we're, this is our preliminary budget where we had the one point eight million dollar revenue gap. Our revenue went up two point five percent, but our expenses are up seven point three percent. This is our fund balance, uh, back in two se- two thousand fifteen, when our tax rate was twelve point seven. We had ten point five million dollars in fund balance. And ever since, it's been gradually going down. In two thousand eighteen, we increased our tax rate and we, the fund balance went up a little bit, but then again, it, it keeps going down. Twenty-twenty, COVID hit and that killed our revenue. Even though we increased our tax rate, we still had to dip into our fund balance and that was all COVID related. This shows, um, how our, this is our general fund balance in two thousand fifteen, we went from ten point five to eight point five at the end of twenty-twenty. Our revenue is, is up a little bit each year. And it could, we went basically from thirty-five percent of, uh, revenue down to twenty-five percent. And this is, this graph shows it. And the green line is what our financial policy states. So we're getting closer and closer to that green line. And when we're looking to borrow money for financing, this is something that the, uh, rating agencies want to see it more at the thirty-five rather than continually going down. This is our recommendation to close revenue gap. We increased the tax rate from sixteen, seventeen mil. The average taxpayer will pay an additional seventy dollars a year, generating approximately eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. We also recommend using nine hundred and forty-three thousand of ARPA funds. It's a short-term solution. But, um, we hope to, the revenue will continue to, uh, catch up after recovering from COVID. And we always recommend not to use a fund balance only in emergencies. So. And so this is where we are at. If we increase our revenue, using tax revenue and we use a little bit of ARPA funds, that's what we recommend to balance the budget. And that's it. Do you have any?
Counsel, any questions? Just one, uh, using the ARPA funds, will that end up hurting us in our bond rating?
They, it's one-time revenue streams, but, um, yes, it would hurt us a little bit, yes.
Not as much as using fund balance, I guess.
Correct, correct.
One more question.
Yep, um, what are, what are our projections going into, let's say, the next three to five years? I feel like every year that I've been on council, that we've always had a deficit.
Well, it seems like every year there's, there is an issue.
And I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, projects and development and, um, things getting fixed, ridge, road, uh, bridges, roads, streets. What is a, a projection that we can work towards?
I think
To, to see positive revenue come in and where, where some areas that we can probably focus on, um, to capture the revenue.
Well, Jane had done a presentation earlier. There's a lot of, uh, with the state hospital, a lot of revenue producing opportunities there and a lot of development that's going in. Ten to ten percent, all that will help us, main shoe. So all that will help us.
Counsel, any other questions? Look, you know, I'm, you came to bring up a good point, but the deficit every year and like we sit here and people kill us for the homeless shelter, right? The county properties and all the nonprofits and all the taxes exempt entities in town added up our two point five, three million dollars in lost revenue every year. And that's what we have, right? Every single year because of those agencies and everybody dumping on our town, right? They don't want it in their backyard, so just put it in our town, we're shipping up to Pottstown. And that's where this council has kind of made the stand to say it's gotta stop. These things have to get spread out evenly. There's gotta be resources elsewhere besides these two towns. And that partnered with the development that is going on, I think our projection is looking a lot more bright, but I'm a, I'm in favor of this, uh, budget for this year, so.
I think depending on, you know, you guys getting ready to make a real great, have a great choice to make in, in twenty-twenty uh, three, about that sixty-eight acres, uh, which has a transformational opportunity for revenue. Uh, and, and so that's gonna be the key as you analyze what comes in front of you. Uh, that is gonna be a decision for you all to look at some things in terms of probably the, definitely, I wouldn't say probably, it's gonna be the most significant. Sure, uh, I, I was saying the council is gonna have an opportunity, uh, next year with the sixty-eight acres, uh, that's gonna be developed out on the state hospital grounds that ju- uh, got conveyed. Uh, that's gonna be a transformational opportunity, uh, for, for the community in terms of generating revenue. So they're gonna have, uh, some opportunities to look at some proposals and assess what that fiscal impact i- is gonna be. And that's really gonna be the biggest way uh, in terms of sustainable revenue for generations to come, uh, that's gonna come. So it's gonna be really important as, as you guys evaluate those projects and you'll have all kinds of metrics to look at what, what that means in terms of, of the future and, and future budgets. So it's, uh, you know, you hit it right on the head in terms of getting that sixty-eight acres on the tax rolls is, is gonna be, um, the most consequential, uh, development that's, that's happened in our town in decades, so.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash oh-five?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Guys have it, ordinance passes. And ordinance twenty-two dash oh-seven, authorizing and directing issuance of general obligation debt to finance renovation of municipal hall.
Thank you. Uh, in June twenty-twenty, we took a three-year bond to pay for the construction cost of the municipal hall. At the May eighteenth meeting this year, we requested permission from council to pursue an issuance of a new bond to pay off that short-banned bond and additional money to pay for the increased cost of building between the, um, the age of the building, um, inflation, uh, production problems, it's, we're, um, getting products, chain, supply chain, yes. Um, they, they've increased our costs. So, uh, now it's up to eighteen million. Um, so we discussed this in May. Uh, since then, we've been, we went today to working, we've been working on putting together the bond with our municipal, our, uh, investment advisor from Davenport. And we went today for the bond sale. And she can explain the, um, the details of the bond sale and how that went and the results.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. I'm Jennifer Dirksen. I am with Davenport, the municipality's financial advisor. Um, so today, the municipality successfully sold seventeen point seven million of general obligation bonds. Um, as Ms. Bister mentioned, um, that was for the takeout of the bond anticipation note from twenty-twenty as well as the additional five billion, um, in, uh, for the municipal building. Um, the municipality received six bids, uh, which is a good amount of bids. The winning bidder is, uh, Robert W. Baird and Company, um, with a, they had the lowest interest rate, but interest rate was a four point oh eight percent. Um, the next highest bid or the cover bid, um, was from Jenny Montgomery at, uh, four point one three, so about five basis points above, um, the winning bid. Um, and the Baird bid at four point oh eight actually beat our expectations. We were, um, anticipating that it would be around four point four percent. Um, so, and the municipality ended up doing better. And, uh, we had made a presentation back in July about this bond issuance and actually even though interest rates have, have risen over that time, um, they've recently come back down. And so we really ended up, um, basically where we anticipated in July. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions. Um, if you don't have any questions, I'm gonna turn it over to your bond counsel, Ms. Kurtz, to walk you through the bond ordinance.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. My name's Laura Kurtz. I'm the co-chair of public finance, Eric Siemens, and we're serving as your bond counsel. I'll be very brief on the debt ordinance. I know you're sophisticated. You've been through this process before. Um, it's a twenty-page document that's required by the local government unit debt act. If you ever have any trouble sleeping, uh, you're welcome. We'll take over you of this. Uh, what this document does is it authorizes issuance of seventeen million, one, or seven hundred and ten thousand dollars of general obligation debt to cover the current refunding of the twenty-twenty A notes and the new money for municipal hall. It also accepts the proposal that Jennifer went, mentioned, uh, from R.W. Baird. It appoints MNT as your paying agent. They take care of paying the bondholders. Um, it accepts the purchase proposal. It provides for all of the terms of the bonds. This document pledges your full faith, credit and taxing power. And it sets force covenants under the tax code for you to issue taxes on debt. So you're issuing this debt for your project. You're not, you're earning arbitrage, you're not investing it in an account to earn interest above the yield. Um, so you're making these covenants in this document. You're also authorizing the filing of debt app proceeding, debt act proceedings, which are required by the local government unit debt act. We're handling those for you. Um, and you're approving distribution of a preliminary official statement and official statement, which is the marketing piece to investors. So the public can go out and buy your bonds. Um, you're also approving the issuance of bond insurance. Um, it's economical for you to do that because the rating that you're getting from your bond insurer, um, saves enough money through that interest rate in terms of the premium that you're paying. Um, this is the only official action that you'll have to take, uh, after this, after you enact this ordinance. We'll get together, we'll sign closing documents. We'll make sure your solicitor has an opportunity to review those. Um, and we're scheduled for closing on December twenty-ninth. Uh, so with that, I'll take any questions that you have on this document.
Counsel, any questions? None, thank you. Do I have a motion to case ordinance twenty-two dash oh-seven? Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Guys have it, ordinance passes. Mr. Jones, resolution twenty-two dash eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, you have before you a resolution for the purchase of uh, additional builders' risk insurance for the municipal hall. Uh, in that we've had the, um, extension of time needed to complete the project due to, uh, unforeseen conditions in the, uh, in the process, in the process of, uh, renovating the building with, there's a period of time we need to cover additionally for builders' risk insurance, which essentially protects the project, uh, from different types of exposure, uh, during the construction period. So it might be hail, thunderstorms, et cetera. Uh, just making sure that as this project is going on, uh, we are covered. Uh, and that it'll extend it for an additional, uh, seven months, uh, at a price of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
Counsel, any questions?
I have one. Um, if it so happens that we don't need all of the seven months, would it be appropriated at whatever we do use? Or are we paying for the seven months kind of regardless of the construction schedule?
Uh, I think it's, we're gonna be paying for it, but the way we time this out, you know, I time like, let's get as close to as April. And if we had to come back, we'll come back again, play anything beyond that. So I didn't, I didn't try to stretch it beyond what we thought we should need.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash eighty-one?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Guys have it, resolution passes. Mr. Jones, approval of a resolution to support five hundred thousand dollars small water grant application.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a small, uh, a form resolution, uh, issued by, uh, D C E D. And this is for a, the sewer authority, I'm sorry, Stonewater Authority is, uh, has approved an application for five hundred thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, in the, in this grant program to undertake part of that capital improvement plan. Uh, that one of the reasons you guys created the Stonewater Authority was to be able to go after money like this, uh, for a grant. And so in this, in this, uh, meeting last Thursday, the authority was, uh, presented with this grant. And they approved it. The next step in the process would be for, because of the way the, uh, the authority is structured, would be for the council, uh, to, uh, approve a resolution supporting that application. There's a, uh, there's a, a fifteen percent match to that grant, which would come out to roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, that would be used actually from existing, uh, Stonewater Authority funds. Uh, that, uh, they had some projects because they came in, uh, so high overbid, that's their money in the budget, uh, to, uh, to cover that match. Uh, I'll share with you as I shared with, uh, the authority. Um, the, I did receive an application, a, a letter of support, a copy of a letter of support from the county for the sewer authorities, uh, applying for the same grant. I, I reached out because it, the way it looked, it referenced us as applying for the grant. And I sh- I shared with the sewer, uh, authority, uh, G M that unless council has actually taken an action like this, it can't be in our name. But I think what's happened, and he said, no, it's not that. I think the county assumed because it was the Norristown store, uh, sewer authority, that it was Norristown. And they didn't put sewer authority in there. Be that it's, may, and may it might be a competing grant. Oh, hell, it is a competing grant for the same amount of funds. Uh, so, uh, you might get questions, uh, about that, e- even from, uh, from the state, uh, in terms of it. So it's, there's a possibility they might split the baby, maybe. Or, uh, certainly, I think always in terms of these grant programs, they tend to lean where the municipality leans uh, in there. So just as an FYI, so at, at, at the end of the day, we'd like, uh, the sewer authority would like for council to approve this resolution in support of their, the Stonewater Authority, in support of their application, uh, for a small water grant.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the resolution to support the small water grant.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Guys have it, resolution passes. Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, resolution- Counsel, resolution twenty-two dash eighty-two is a resolution supporting an intergovernmental agreement between the municipality of Norristown, West Norton Township, and Conshohocken Borough. Uh, all three entities actually use Howe Associates, uh, to, uh, as their agent to apply for, annually, for recycling grant funds from the state. Uh, of the three agencies, municipality receives the largest of, uh, of the three governments. We receive right now about sixty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars, uh, a year would be what, what our next, uh, application would probably yield. West Norton would be twenty-six, four oh three, and, uh, Conshohocken would be twenty-six, oh, oh two two. Uh, through some formula of the state, uh, it was brought to our attention by Howe Associates that if we applied as a unit, uh, as a, as a, uh, in collaboration with each other, that each of the entities will actually get more money. And, and so, uh, we certainly pursued doing that. The municipality would get an additional ten thousand, two hundred sixty-seven. Uh, West Norton would get an additional four thousand, two hundred seventy-six, and Conshohocken would get an additional four thousand, two hundred fourteen. Uh, there was, uh, a request of who would be the lead agency. I offered municipality as the lead agency, uh, in making the application, and, and the other two parties agreed. And so if you, with your approval, will submit that application, uh, get those additional funds, and those funds have always been used, uh, to support, keep Norristown beautiful, uh, beautification efforts in town. And, and this additional revenue would be used in that same manner.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash eighty-two?
Send it.
Send it.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPere?
Aye. Guys have it. Resolution passes. Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-three, waiver for food trucks.
Yes, and this is, uh, this, uh, resolution is just a, a request to council to waive your food truck ordinance, uh, for the, your fair, holiday fair, uh, next week, as, uh, probably a high chance that the, some of the venues will actually be on Merris Street, which is right next to the jury parking lot. If it was all gonna be contained in the parking lot, we wouldn't need to do this. Uh, but just in the end, if in case we need to, we wanted to be consistent and waive your ordinance.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash eighty-three?
Send it.
Send it.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPere?
Aye. Guys have it. Resolution passes. Departmental reports, start with you, Mr. Singh.
Uh, thank you, Counsel President. I just have a few items. I'll keep it very brief. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, of doing our twenty-twenty-three rental licenses. Uh, it is rental season, so we have already sent out letters to all of the property owners informing them that they need to renew their twenty-twenty-three rental licenses. Uh, and we've already received, started to receive many of the applications back. And, um, uh, 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 property owners have been paying their invoices as well. Uh, one of the biggest items that we've seen, uh, with this rental season is because we are being very diligent with making sure that, uh, each property owner has their Norristown Business Privilege License. Uh, some of the applications that we're receiving are, uh, being deemed as incomplete, and we are sending a letter back to the property owner explaining to them that, uh, you do have to apply for and obtain your Norristown Business License. So, uh, it, it's gonna be a little bit of a time. Usually by January, February, we have all of the licenses, uh, pretty much received, or the applications received, and we're ready to issue the licenses. Uh, but this time, we're looking at maybe like a thirty to forty-five day delay in possibly having to issue the licenses in January of next year, only because a lot of the property owners, uh, don't already have their business privilege license. Um, and they, once they're informed of it, uh, they are applying for it and, and obtaining it. We did send out letters to all of the property owners earlier this year, back in March after we, informing them that when they're gonna have to renew their twenty-twenty-three license, that they have to apply for and obtain their, uh, business privilege license. So we did update them previously regarding this, and even in the information packet that we sent out to all the property owners, it's all in there as well. Uh, but they still sent it to us incomplete, so we are having to send those back. So I just wanted to share that with council in case you guys are getting any calls, uh, for why the applications are being deemed incomplete. Um, regarding contractor licenses, uh, we're almost close to issuing eight hundred licenses under the new ordinance, and, uh, we are gonna do the same thing as we did with the, uh, rental licenses. Uh, within the next week, we're gonna be sending out a renewal, uh, application to all of the existing contractors, um, where all of the information is pre-filled, and it's just, this is pretty much the same as the rental licenses, where we pre-filled all of the key information, and anything that the contractor needs to update, they can update. And pretty much, it's to make it easier for them to, uh, get their twenty-twenty-three license, since they've already been vetted, uh, with our new licensing laws, with having to submit, you know, uh, a lot of qualification documents and things like that. Uh, with the contractor license renewal, we're trying to keep it simple, where it's a one-page renewal application, and all they would pretty much have to do is submit copies of their insurance certificates that they're still active, and they would be able to renew their license. So it won't be how, uh, in the beginning of the year, they have to submit a complete packet with all of their information and things like that. Um, so those will be coming out within the next week. Um, so we're, we're looking forward to the twenty-twenty-three renewals. As far as property transfers, it's been a very, very busy year. Um, and I'm sure Ms. Jane and Ms. Kathy can attest to that with all the tax records they do on the use registrations. So, so far this year, we've already done over eight hundred property transfers. And just to share with you, in twenty-twenty, it was in the low six hundreds. So it's been a very busy year, and, uh, we did that with, you know, some staffing challenges throughout the year. We were short-staffed. We had to use, uh, third-party, uh, uh, inspection agencies to assist us, but we were able to get that done. And I am happy to also, uh, provide an update regarding our, uh, open positions, that we're very close to filling one, uh, role in our department, which is the permit tech. Uh, and hopefully, uh, so we, we've done the interviews, and, uh, that person's going through the, the, the H R background check, pro, the process and everything, so hopefully that person will be starting soon. And this week, we're holding interviews for the four open inspector positions. So we're hopeful that before the end of the year, we'll be fully staffed and ready to go for twenty-twenty-three. And so overall, it's been a very busy year, and we've had a lot of achievements and accomplishments. And in January, uh, I'll be submitting to Mr. Jones and to council, uh, the departmental annual report. I've already started working on it. It's already like a hundred pages. So I'll be sending that to you guys, uh, but when it's time to present it, obviously it'll just be the key holidays, and that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Uh, business privilege tax, so is that something we haven't done in the past? And kind of what, what is that, what positive would that bring to the community? And I guess another question, is it a common thing that other townships do as well?
Absolutely. So a lot of jurisdictions have a business privilege license requirement, and one of the things you guys were just discussing, and, uh, Ms. Kathy and Mr. Jones can, uh, you know, clarify that even more. But, uh, the building department previously, obviously, a lot of applications go through our department, contractor licenses, rental licenses, uh, uh, change of commercial tenants, uh, meaning like when new businesses come into the municipality. So previously, the department, uh, was not verifying if the business, whether it was a landlord, whether it was a contractor, or if it's a new, you know, restaurant or whatever, has obtained their Norristown Business License. And that was actually hurting the municipality because of, uh, tax collection. Um, so, so that's one of the, uh, processes we have now is to verify that, does this business have the Norristown Business Privilege License? And, uh, if they don't, we inform them that they have to, uh, apply for it and obtain it, and then we'll be able to process that paperwork. And, uh, the report we received from Tri-State, uh, earlier this week, I believe there's over nineteen hundred licenses that have been issued, uh, this year, and it's the most we've ever had, uh, in, in general, for any, at, at, any year to have active licenses. So, uh, Ms. Kathy can elaborate on that further, but it's gonna help with, uh, revenues next year, uh, and.
Yeah. All that business that comes through this year, they, they pay next, next July, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can I push up, please?
Okay, thank you, Counsel President. Uh, from the police, uh, I don't, I don't know if you've got copies of the goals and objectives report from Christie from October. I don't know if she sent that to you. Um, so that, I can just go skim over real quick.
That's fine.
Um, so basically, based on our goals and objectives, um, we led it at a goal of six hundred and seventy-six part one crimes by the end of, uh, October. We're over that. Uh, we've been very busy. So we've already surpassed that, or went under that goal. Two of the biggest reasons for that are, are stolen vehicles, and now I'm seeing, uh, we're seeing robberies, um, that are, that are occurring. The stolen vehicles, we are double what we were last year, uh, so far this time, this year. And we haven't gotten into the cold months where a lot of stolen vehicles tend to be taken, when people are warming them up. We're kind of at a loss at this point on what we can do to, to stop this. We've done everything that I think is, we possibly can, short of starting issuing state citations for people even to car, running and unlocked and unoccupied, which we really don't want to do because that, that's, I think it's sending the wrong message. But what we're seeing is, it's youth that are doing this. They're searching for these cars. Some are coming up from the city, some are from town because we're finding them recovered, both in, here in town and down in the city, or on the way to the city where they crash on the expressway, which we saw in a couple recent ones. I don't know why they think, the people coming up from the city think that Norristown is so easy, but apparently it is. Um, so I don't know how else we can get the message out to people in town, to do not leave their cars running, unlocked, with the keys in it, anyway, because it's usually around convenience stores or in front of their homes that this is happening. Takes five seconds for somebody to jump in the car and drive off of it. There's no violence involved. It's not like Philadelphia where they're carjacking people. It's just a crime of opportunity. They walk by, see a car running, get in and go off, and in five seconds, they're gone. And there's very little we can do about it to prevent it, as far as a police department. Um, and that, that's really the biggest thing that's, that's driving our crime numbers this year. Um, robbery is what we're seeing. Um, it's more on the west end, especially along Marshall Street Business District. I think some of our, um, Latino business partners back here would agree with me. Um, our Hispanics are being targeted again, uh, on the West Marshall Street Business District area, not necessarily on Marshall Street itself. But in the past, it's been intoxicated subjects. That's no longer the case. These are lone pedestrians walking that are basically a crime of opportunity where a group of, and I'm gonna say young males because they're not young men. They are certainly not men for what they're doing. Attack and will rob a single person, take off running. The biggest problem we have with this is, because of COVID, everybody's still wearing masks, so we can't get ident, identity of, of these people. And ninety-nine percent of them are youth. Uh, they're under the age of eighteen. They think it's, I think it's a game with them, or a joke, or a challenge. Um, what we're doing now is we're putting out extra patrols in that area. We're actually adding some extra mobile cameras, I guess is a good way to put it, to try and cut down on it. We're lighting up the alleys. Um, we're putting out flyers in all the Hispanic businesses along Marshall Street to let them know, stay on the streets, stay in the lit areas, don't walk in the alleys. And last week, we did that over the weekend. We had no robberies over there. So for one weekend, it worked. I'm hoping that continues to be the, the case. So they're the two biggest things that I see right now. Uh, for the year, we're fourteen percent over what we were last year. Um, shootings are higher this year than they were last year, although shots fired are lower. It just means probably the same amount of shooting incidents, but more people are being hit, um, which is disturbing. It's, they're either getting to be better shots where they're just, um, there's more of them doing it. Our latest homicide that we just had, uh, we already had made an arrest in that. Our victim was not even from this area. He was unknown to us before he was shot. It was a, some type of argument that happened, and that subject's already been arrested. So that was a very quick clearance, and that just happened two weeks ago. So, and there's, of all the homicides we have, only one has not been solved yet, um, or made an arrest in. So, you know, we've been exceptionally good on our clearance rates with that. Like I said, as far as, um, if I could move into personnel for the, for the department, we're now at, two people that are on terminal leave, uh, they, they will clear out and no longer be part of the department in January. We have two officers that are still out on light duty, uh, both injured on duty. Uh, one was a recent incident. We are in the midst of a promotional process for captain and lieutenant positions, uh, which should be finished up before the end of the year, uh, probably with a, a recommendation coming to council. We have the, now the certified list before you, that we put before you earlier for new hires for police candidates. We're looking to hire at least four, or more, maybe six, and hopefully we get the people that are already, um, act one twenty qualified and current police officers, to get them right on the street, instead of having to wait the six months for them to go through the academy, and then put them on the street to learn our town. Um, so we're hoping to see that start up in January, at least get some new people in, and, and get them trained, so help our manpower situation, because right now we, we're six, eight below what we should be, um, for the street, and we're busy. We're, you know, winter time is usually quieter. We have not been quieter this year, for some strange reason. Um, any questions on any of that, or any comments?
Counsel, any questions?
We had a question. Um, how are interactions with the homeless community, are things positive? Are you seeing any, um, you know, seeing any increase in crime or anything? We had, in the partnership, I noticed with the partnership, the police accept a, a different agency, how's that going?
That's, that's going the, the, what it has been, there's, but not, there's been no increase in crime as it comes to, um, our homeless population area, to say the transportation center or the train station. There's actually a decrease, um, from what I was seeing over in the summertime. So they've had sixty-some unhoused population contacts in October. Um, our overdoses, it looks like, are starting to come down, uh, which is good, that we were going for a, a good state there where there was a lot of overdoses happening, not necessarily with our homeless population, but with a lot of people. So there was an influx of drugs, and I think that's being stemmed somewhat. I don't see much coming from Septa right now. I'm not part of that, uh, meeting that they have monthly, so I don't know what's going on with them. Uh, we're continuing our operation out, out outreach with, uh, the opioid epidemic. Uh, we're, we're still going to the same places. We don't see any increase in new encampments. In fact, if anything, uh, we have seen a decrease of what we have in the summertime. Uh, now that the foliage is gone, they're much easier to see, and we're just not seeing new ones. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Thank you. Chief Food Bank?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Municipal Council. Fire Department, uh, operational summary for the month of November. Year-to-date totals, emergency dispatches, one thousand two hundred and thirty. Average response time is four minutes and seven seconds. Our busiest day is Saturday at five P M. Departmental training classes, uh, five hundred and ninety-two, year-to-date, with a total of four thousand one hundred and eleven hours. For the year, we've had seven firefighter injuries, five civilian injuries, and zero deaths. At the fire department, completed eight hundred and fifty-four commercial fire inspections for the year. Held two hundred and thirty-two public education projects, thirteen fire drills. We visited a total of eight hundred and seventy-three homes and installed two hundred and sixty-two smoke detectors. And for the year, we've had, uh, seven events where the fire safety house was used. That's it, Mr. President.
Counsel, any questions?
Just, um, congratulations. I, did we learn that you got appointed to a board recently?
I'm sorry.
You just get, you recently got appointed to a, a governor's board, correct?
Yeah, I got appointed by Governor Wolf, the circle, and he has state fire advisory board, uh, for a two-year term. State Fire Advisory Board for a two-year term.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, do I have a motion to adjourn? Send it. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Getting adjourned. Thank you.